One who's taken the time, Mr. Ron. Since you're the only one in the audience, thanks for being here. Always appreciate that. I now call the order of the May 6, 2021 Regular Board of Alderman Meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Walker.
Here.
Alderman Rucker.
Here.
Alderman Becker.
Here.
Alderman Moros.
Here.
Alderman Ross.
Here.
Alderman Osteen.
Here.
Mayor Oliveri.
Here. All right, we do have a quorum. Under Mayor's communications tonight, we have three proclamations. First proclamation is Peace Officers Memorial Day, May 15, 2021, and National Police Week, May 9 through the 15, 2021. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15 as Peace Officer Memorial Day and the week in which May 15 falls as National Police Week, and whereas the members of the Osage Beach Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of Osage Beach, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agencies, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognizes their duty to serve people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas the men and women of the Osage Beach Police Department unceasingly provide a vital public service. Now therefore, I, John Oliveri, Mayor, call upon all citizens and all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May 9 through May 15 as National Police Week in Osage Beach and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and communities across the nation. I further call upon the citizens of Osage Beach to observe May 15, 2021 as Peace Officer Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families. Our second proclamation is National Emergency Medical Services Week, May 16 through the 22, 2021. Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical service teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas the emergency medical service system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, and others. And whereas the members of emergency medical service teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continued education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas is it appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishment of emergency medical service providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, I, John Oliveri, Mayor, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May 16 through the 22, 2021, as Emergency Medical Services Week. With the theme EMS Strong Call to Care, I encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. And our final proclamation is National Public Works Week, May 16 through the 22, 2021. Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operations of public work systems and programs such as water, sewer, streets, and highways, public buildings, and solid waste collection. And whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their plan, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public work officials. And whereas the efficiency of the quality and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, I, John Oliveri, Mayor of the City of Osage Beach, do hereby proclaim the week of May 16 through the 22, 2021, as National Public Works Week in the City of Osage Beach. And I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public work officials make every day to our health, safety, and comfort and quality of life. Our next item is Citizens Communication. This is time set aside on the agenda for citizens and visitors to address the Mayor and Board on any topic that is not a public hearing. There are no public hearings on tonight's agenda. For those who are here in person, speakers will be restricted to three minutes unless otherwise permitted. Minutes may not be donated or transferred from one speaker to another. Visitors attending via online will be in listen-only mode. Any questions or comments from the Mayor and Board may be sent to the city clerk at tbethren@osagebeach.org, no later than 10:00 a.m. on the board meeting date, the first and third Thursday of each month. Submitted questions and comments may be read during the Citizens Communications Section of the Agenda. The Board of Alderman will not take action on any item not listed on the Agenda, nor will it respond to questions, although staff may be directed to respond at a later date. The Mayor and Board of Alderman welcome and value input and feedback from the public. Is there anyone here in person who would like to address the Board? Ron?
Go ahead.
All right. Well, again, thank you for being here. We move on. Our first item of business is the approval of the Consent Agenda. If the Board desires, the Consent Agenda may be approved by a single motion. Tonight's Agenda consists of the minutes of the April 15, 2021 Board of Alderman Meeting and the May 6, 2021 Bills List. Are there any questions, comments, or proposed revisions? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
So moved.
Alderman Moros, do I have a second? Alderman Becker, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The Consent Agenda is approved. Our only item of unfinished business tonight requests a second reading by title only of Ordinance Number 21.19, an ordinance of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri, amending Ordinance Number 20.83, adopting the 2021 Annual Budget, Transfer of Funds for Necessary Expenses. The first reading was approved at the April 15 Board Meeting. Are there any comments from the City Administrator?
No additional comments.
Are there any questions from the Board? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve second reading?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Rucker, do I have a second? Alderman Walker, roll call, please.
Alderman Ross.
Yes.
Alderman Osteen.
Yes.
Alderman Becker.
Yes.
Alderman Walker.
Yes.
Alderman Moros.
Yes.
Alderman Rucker.
Yes.
All right, the second reading is approved. Our first item of new business requests a motion to approve the certification of the April 6, 2021 election results. City Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the Board. In your packet, you have the certified results from the election. I just need a motion to approve, and then we can do the appointments.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions from the Board? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Alderman Moros, do I have a second? Alderman Rucker, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Now it's time for our re-elected Aldermen to take their oath of office. Alderman Ross, Becker, and Osteen, if you would please move to the front of the dais where the city clerk will administer your oath.
Do some of me swear that I will support the Constitution?
Do some of me swear that I will support the Constitution?
Of the United States.
The United States.
The Constitution of the State of Missouri.
The Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And the city ordinances of the City of Osage Beach.
And the city ordinances of the City of Osage Beach.
And that I will faithfully demean myself as?
And I will faithfully demean myself as?
Alderman of your Board.
Alderman of my Board.
Within and for the City of Osage Beach.
Within and for the City of Osage Beach.
For which I was appointed.
For which I was appointed.
Congratulations and welcome back to serving at Osage Beach for another two years.
Thank you.
Our next item is the election of President of the Board of Alderman. In accordance with Section 110, 170, I now open the floor for nominations for President of the Board. Are there any nominations? Alderman Moros.
I would like to nominate again our Alderman Richard Ross for President for the next two years.
All right, are there any additional nominations?
No, I'd second Sam.
Okay, this is just a nomination.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I also nominate Richard Ross for a second term.
Okay. Are there any additional nominations?
Excuse me.
Yes.
Just one correction. It's not for two years, Phil, it's just for one year.
It's one year.
Phil said for two years.
Okay.
It's a one-year, it's a one-year.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I just want to make sure.
Okay.
The one-year position.
Thank you.
All right, since there are no additional nominations, I now announce the new Board President, President by acclamation. Congratulations, Alderman Ross.
Thank you, thank you, everyone.
All right, our next item, request a first reading of Bill Number 21-20, an ordinance of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri, amending the Osage Beach Code of Ordinances by repealing Chapter 50, Article 5, Section 500.140, adoption of International Plumbing Code and replacing it with a new Chapter 500, Article 5, Section 500.140, adoption of 2018 International Plumbing Codes. Building official, please.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the Board. As detailed in my summary sheet, this is an update of the codes from the currently adopted and enforced 2012 International Plumbing Code, and we are proposing to update it to the 2018 version.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Alderman Ross.
So, real quick, Ron, you said that other jurisdictions have already adopted this. Do you mind, do you know who has?
I believe everybody around the Lake area. We are the final one. I think the next closest was the Osage Beach Fire Protection District who adopted it last fall.
Was there any hesitation on your part since these have been out since probably late 18 or early 19?
No. Generally, what we do is wait a year or two before we adopt the newer codes. They come out every three years. Historically, we have adopted the versions every six years.
Okay.
This one got put a little bit behind. We had initially intended to bring this to you guys last year, but due to circumstances, it was pushed back.
Thank you, that's all I have, thanks.
Any other questions? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve first reading?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Ross, do I have a second? Alderman Becker, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First reading passes. Our next item, request a first reading of Bill Number 21-21, an ordinance of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri, amending the Osage Beach Court of Ordinances by repealing Chapter 500, Article 2, Section 500.040, adoption of National Electrical Codes and replacing it with a new Chapter 500, Article 2, Section 500.040, adoption of 2017 National Electric Codes. Building official, please.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the Board. This is the same type of adoption recommendation for the National Electrical Code going from the 2011 version, which we currently enforce, to the 2017.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve first reading?
So moved.
Alderman Becker, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Walker, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First reading passes. Our next item, request a first reading of Bill Number 21-22, an ordinance of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri, amending the Osage Beach Code of Ordinances by repealing Chapter 500, Article 4, Section 500.110, adoption of International Mechanical Code and replacing it with a new Chapter 500, Article 4, Section 500.110, adoption of 2018 International Mechanical Code. Building official.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the Board. Same thing here on the International Mechanical Code, required to move to the 2018 in an effort to stay current with technologies and practices used within the built environment.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve first reading?
So moved.
Alderman Moros, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Walker, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First reading passes. Our next item, request a first reading of Bill Number 21-23, an ordinance of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri, amending the Osage Beach Code of Ordinances by repealing Chapter 500, Article 1, Section 500.035, adoption of International Resident Code and replacing it with a new Chapter 500, Article 1, Section 500.035, adoption of the 2018 International Resident Code. Building official, please.
Yes, Mayor, as stated, this is our request and recommendation to adopt the 2018 Residential Code.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments?
I do have a question.
Yes, Bob.
Just out of curiosity, was there anything within the new code that was significantly different than the previous code as far as requirements?
Yes, there are a lot of significant changes to all of the codes. When I say significant, it's, let's see, an example would be arc fault protection on receptacles in houses. Previously, arc fault protection was required only in bedroom areas. It was expanded in 2015 and carried over to the 18 codes to be included also in laundry areas, kitchens, basically all living areas. So there are changes like that, and I've got a summary of changes that I've refreshed myself on, and I'd be happy to send those out to anybody who's interested before I leave the building.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Yes, Alderman Ross.
Could you send it to the entire Board, or at least myself?
Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Send it to everybody.
That's all.
Anything else? Comments or questions? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve first reading?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Ross, second. Alderman Osteen, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First reading passes. Our next item is requesting a first reading of Bill Number 21-24, an ordinance of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri, amending the Osage Beach Code of Ordinances by repealing Chapter 500, Article 1, Section 500.010, 2012 International Building Code adoption and replacing it with a new Chapter 500, Article 1, Section 500.0110, or excuse me, 010, adoption of the 2018 International Building Codes. Building official, please.
Yes, the Building Department recommends updating the International Building Code 2012 version to this 2018.
Thank you. Are there any questions, comments?
Mr. Osteen. Once again, I do have a comment.
Alderman Osteen.
Section 109.4, that seems awful slight for a penalty fee for people that are building homes without the required permits. It's only a $250 fine?
Yes, and that has only come about a couple of times during my tenure. That's if somebody starts construction without the permit. We do go out and stop them. They wouldn't continue. Otherwise, the fine could be, the penalty could be up to $500 a day with each day being a separate occurrence.
I just thought that seemed awful miniscule if somebody's out there slapping up a house without the required permits, and we're going to slap their hand and say $250 is the fine, so, all right.
No, we do stop the work.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve first reading? Alderman Osteen, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Moros, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First reading passes. Our next item, request a first reading of Bill Number 21-25, an ordinance of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri, amending the Osage Beach Code of Ordinances by repealing Chapter 500, Article 8, Section 500, 240, adoption of International Fuel/Gas Code and replacing it with a new Chapter 500, Article 8, Section 500, 240, adoption of the 2018 International Fuel/Gas Code. Building official, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The Building Department does recommend updating the International Fuel/Gas Code to the 2018 version.
All right, thank you. Questions or comments? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve first reading? Alderman Becker, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Ross, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First reading passes. Our next item is requesting a first reading of Bill Number 21-26, an ordinance of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri, adopting a new chapter, Article, excuse me, Chapter 500, Article 1, Section 500.025, adopting of the 2018 International Existing, or excuse, yeah, yeah, Existing Building Code. Sorry. Are there any, building official?
Yes, this is an adoption of a new code, and just for clarity, the previous International Building Code additions contain this verbiage within their International Building Code. They have now separated the existing building code out to have its own book, I guess because the building code was getting too thick, so this helps out, but we do recommend approval.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve first reading?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Rucker, do I have a second? Alderman Becker, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, first reading is approved. Our next item is requesting a first reading of, oops, let me drop down, 21-27, an ordinance of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri, amending the Osage Beach Code of Ordinances by repealing Chapter 500, Article 7, Section 500.180, adoption of Fire Prevention Code and replacing it with a new Chapter 500, Article 7, Section 500.180, adoption of Fire Prevention Code. Building official, please.
Yes, Mayor, just as a matter of clarification, something that was brought up to me on page 85 for the fire hydrant bonnet colors, it's a little confusing on here. There was a glitch whenever we went from the ordinance draft into the summary sheet. Under color and water main size, it should be green, and then orange, and then red, and follows the next three on the right-hand side. So green would be 14-inch or larger, orange would be 10 to 12-inch, and red would be in 6 to 8-inch. Just a matter of clarity, we recommend approval.
All right, thank you. Questions or comments? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Alderman Moros, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Ross, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First reading passes. Our next item is requesting first reading of Bill Number 21-28, an ordinance of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri, amending the Osage Beach Code of Ordinances by repealing Chapter 500, Article 8, Section 500.080, adoption of International Property Maintenance Code and replacing it with a new Chapter 500, Article, I said 8, Article 3, Section 500. 080, adoption of the 2018 International Property Maintenance Code. Building official.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Building Department, let me see, the Building Department recommends approval of the update of the International Property Maintenance Code to the 2018 edition.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Alderman Walker, do I have a second? Alderman Ross, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First reading passes. Sorry about that. Our next item is requesting a first reading of Bill Number 21-29, an ordinance of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Stockman Construction Corporation for the Rin Lane Improvements Project in an amount not to exceed Assistant City Administrator.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and members of the Board. This project was bid out in early April. The bid opening was on April 22. The city received three bids. You'll find the bid tab on page 99. The low bidder was Stockman Construction at a bid of $107,465. The budget for this project was $109,000, and I didn't put this in my comments, but I do want to remind everybody that this is a Special Road District project, so it is fully reimbursable, it will be fully reimbursed by the Special Road District. As you know, we've done business with Stockman many times. They recently completed Mace Road Phase 2A, and we've also had, we have also done several other projects with them over the last five to seven years. I did check their references and found no problems. The contract includes the removal of the existing features along Rin and the construction of approximately 428 feet of new 18-foot wide road with a cul-de-sac, and that does include grading. We're also making some minor utility changes. We have to move an electrical meter rack that doesn't currently meet Ameren's compliance standards and make a few other minor utility adjustments. There is an alternate in this bid, and we are recommending that we do the alternate. The alternate would provide an additional 10-foot of paved driveway for the four residents that live down there. This is going to make a smoother transition between the gravel driveways and the pavement, and it's going to make maintenance for our crews a lot easier. So we are recommending that we include that. If you include that, you have to take out the gravel driveway repair line item that's listed on the bid tab. When you take that out, that's how I came to the $107,465. Again, just one more time, I will clarify, this is a Special Road District project. It will be reimbursed by the Special Road District once complete. I do recommend approval.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Yes, Alderman Becker.
So, Mike, is the, these 10 feet of driveways, are those on city rideaways?
I believe so. I believe so.
And is this something normally done?
It's going to vary a little bit from property to property. The majority of that will be on city rideaway.
Okay. Is this something normal in a street such as this that we would do?
Dave, I'll let you take that.
Well, it's a little bit of a unique situation converting a, if it's currently a gravel road with gravel driveways to a paved road. I think there's several benefits for the city in paving the, and I would almost call it a apron into the driveways. It will minimize the amount of gravel that you get out on your paved road. I think it's also going to improve drainage through those areas for stormwater that's running alongside the road. Those driveways will be prone to washing, gravel washing out if we have pavement there. That's less likely to happen.
Alderman Becker, I will tell you, as far as county, unfortunately with the city, we've not converted a lot of gravel roads to paved roads because we, probably this might even be our last one we have in the city. But I know county common practice is to do those approach from the transition from pavement to gravel.
Any other questions? Alderman Becker?
No.
All right.
Thank you.
Alderman Rucker?
A couple. First of all, these four aprons that we're talking about, has there been any discussion with the homeowners? Because aren't, isn't one of them going to be going into one person that doesn't want this project done?
That is not included.
Or is that driveway not included?
That would be a fifth driveway.
So, the last driveway is door higher?
Correct. We are not impacting that property.
Okay, that's fine, as long as we're not, because I know that person is opposed to this project and did not give their sign off. Okay. The other thing is, is do we have the necessary paperwork or stuff in place so that this will be turned over, the request will come before the board after this project is done? Because we have not accepted those streets into city inventory. And that's always been part of the arrangements and part of why we contribute our engineering services and all of that. And that's always been not handled as appropriately as I think it should have been.
Are you asking about have the deeds been signed over?
Whatever paperwork we have to have to...
For their approval. We changed, I will thank Dave on this, because we discussed this when we started getting into some of these Osage Beach Special Road District projects from past processes. And one of the gaps that we were just fortunate not to have to deal with was getting permission. And so, before Stacy even left employment and then Cochran picked back up, we wrote letters and got official signatures accepting, so they knew what they were signing up for and then knowing that the deeds request would come.
So, at what time then will it come before the board for us to accept that into city inventory? After it's done?
And then with the paper, yeah, after we get the deeds and the...
Just want to make sure, because I know in the past, there's been some little hiccups.
Yeah, we're trying to smooth those hiccups from past processes.
Okay, that's all I want to make sure of. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Yes, Alderman Ross.
So, the 10 feet, is that across eight, four driveways, so two or two and a half feet per driveway, or is everybody getting 10 feet?
No, I believe it's 10 feet per driveway, sir.
And why was that 10 needed for each, 10 feet for each driveway? Elevations?
It just seemed like a good number that gives a little bit of room to keep rock off of the road. If we only, if we only had five feet of asphalt driveway, I'm sure that would have been enough to keep the rock off. Also, there's a little bit of a swell alongside the road, and I felt comfortable with 10 feet being the right length to make sure we didn't have drainage issues.
So, are these, there's an uphill and a downhill side here? As I recall the topography, am I right? This road sets like a...
Kind of on top of the ridge. There's a side that has houses on it and a side that doesn't.
Okay, and are those, so...
Houses generally, I guess the houses generally sit above the roof.
The ones that are getting the pavement? Okay. 10 feet seems like a long way to me. I mean, I'm not going to, I haven't went out and looked at it, but it just seems somewhat, when our road was done, Harbor Heights, I mean, don't get me wrong, there was three to five feet probably that came off of there where they tried to make sure that it wasn't a drop-off where you're going to drag your car and so forth, but 10 feet per seems a lot.
This isn't, this isn't for great purposes. That's not, that's not the reason it's done.
It's just so rock doesn't roll down over the curb and gutter?
And then also, there's, the way this, the way this all lays, it didn't work, it really didn't work to have a ditch alongside the road and culvert under the driveway. So, there's potential as water runs alongside the road, there's gravel driveways, those gravel driveways may wash. One made mention for that. The driveway, the paving of the driveway is all unified. It is where you are, the rock and asphalt. Take care of the adjustments with everyone's preference.
I don't know that I have another preference. To be quite honest, I thought this was a marginal project from day one, but that's another story for another day. It just seems like everybody getting 10 feet of asphalt pavement's awful nice if I was a homeowner, so I hope they're happy. They should be. That's all I have.
Alderman Becker?
Alderman Rucker, can I ask why the citizens on that street don't want their property impacted?
There's only one.
Can I ask what the reason is?
I have no idea why. I just happen to have information about it, and I just know that there's one, and fortunately, that person's on the end of the street, so it doesn't impact that person. And since that person didn't want, didn't want any of this, the pavement stops, stops there. But I wanted to make sure his driveway wasn't, because he is totally opposed to this project.
Okay.
Any other questions? Seeing none, is there a motion approved? First reading.
Motion approved.
Alderman Ross and Alderman Rucker, second?
Yes.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? First reading passes. All right, our final item for tonight's agenda is a request for Resolution 2021-04, Resolution of the City of Osage Beach, Missouri, authorizing the filing of an application with the Missouri Department of Natural Resources, Clean Water State Revolving Fund Program for an engineering grant under the Missouri Clean Water Law, RSMO, Chapter 644. City Administrator?
Yes, Mayor, members of the board. So, this is kind of a final technical piece that we need. Every grant is a little different on acceptance. We did apply, theoretically apply for this grant back last fall, I think when we had discussed the Tantera assessment. The board awarded the contract to the engineering group last month, so now we're really finalizing the paperwork, and they want an official resolution accepting the money that we can get, and we have been approved up to $50,000, which is a certain percent, Project 625.
All right, thank you. Questions or comments? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve Resolution 2021-04?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Rucker, do I have a second? Alderman Morose. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The resolution is approved. Now, we move to communications. We start with communications from members of the board. Alderman Ross?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one, and that is, I want to applaud all of those involved, and I'm going to list some people, and if I miss them, so be it, but the Cindy and the chief and the lieutenants, and I think Officer Leva and some other people I probably haven't missed, but the aggressive and approach that we're taking to staffing that we've struggled with for the last couple of years. And while I know it may not be instant rewards, but I think we're thinking outside the box and doing things that we haven't done before, and I want to applaud those efforts, because it's that kind of ownership and approach that will make us, that differentiate us from others. So, thank you very much for all your efforts, and if I miss somebody's name, I apologize. Thanks.
All right, Alderman Morose.
That's very nice, Alderman Ross. I have a couple things that, number one, I had reached out to MoDOT because of the going over the overpasses on our lake roads, one being Jeffries and then on down Nichols and whatever, that just was not up to my liking, basically little bumps to get on and off just to go over the overpass. Anyway, I reached out to Bob Lynch, and coincidentally, he had responded and said, "Well, you're in good timing because our crew is out there," and they were this past week, "and now I can drive on Jeffries over the overpass, and it's just like smooth sailing. It's not bump, bump." Anyway, I just wanted to say thank you, MoDOT, for recognizing that. Secondly, on Three Seasons Road, and I know we brought this up a long time ago, but I think it's something we need to be addressing, because I recognize it again this week, and I'm going down KK. The entrance of going into Three Seasons and exit for these people that are, I should say, drivers that are carrying these large boats or these semis that are delivering to the restaurants down there, they're having a very difficult time of that approach getting onto Three Seasons. It's not real wide, and I know we mentioned it before about trying to make that a little wider, that's safer for our vehicles, whether it be the owners of drivers of the boats going into Redhead or the vendors, you know, looking at suppliers, but I think it's something we need to be looking at very closely. The other thing is, I think I, well, I didn't, I sent out an email to Gina of, "Thank you for the future maintenance program of our pavement, of our sidewalks and our driveways along the parkway or whatever." Again, I question on some of the lake roads of the dates of putting sidewalks on. I think truly, we need to be addressing that a little bit closer as far as pedestrian traffic on that lake road, and I think Jeffries is one that's high priority. There's a lot of people walking up and down that road, and I guess Dog Days is very popular, but there's residents, there's condos, and yet there's a lot of driveways, you know, that go on and off to the residents, but it can't be as expensive as some of the other lake roads. But I'm just thinking of safety for the pedestrians. I don't, I just, I have, I sort of frown on pedestrian walkways across the expressway. I think it's awesome, but until we get something a little bit more addressed to our local people as far as the priority of the pedestrians of walking and having sidewalks, I think we need to address that before the walkway over the expressway. But I appreciate the time and effort that you put in, Dave. Thank you. And other than that, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman Osteen?
Yes, I had two things. Richard kind of touched base on one of them. I wanted to commend our management staff on the employee referral program that was emailed to all of us today. I think any program we can implement to secure qualified candidates for employment within the city is not only a bonus for the city itself, but for the existing employees as well. So, kudos to you for putting that into place. My second one is for Dave, or Cochran Engineering. There seems to be a considerable amount of breakdown of the roadway between Passover Road and the Granglies Bridge. I'm assuming that's due to the heavy truck usage for the equipment going in and out of the new topside condominium development, or is there some underlying condition? Because there are potholes there being filled constantly.
Can I help you? That's not our road. That's MoDOT. That's considered a ramp.
Part of that part?
Right. Then MoDOT put, I'll call it a micro, you know, a thin overlay on it about two years ago, and it peeled up within three months or so, and I don't know what they're going to do down there, but they got a mess.
That seems to be the worst part of the entire Osage Beach Parkway is that section right there.
They've got that, and then they've got the settling of the off-ramp lane right after you get across the bridge going off Jeffries. There's a settling at that one location. If you drive it every day like I do, you fall down pretty bad.
Exactly.
They fixed that about two years ago, but it has done, it has done the exact same thing again.
Over and over.
Yeah. It's pretty bad right now.
Well, I just wanted to bring that to somebody's attention, because that stretch through there, which I drive multiple times per day, seems to really be deteriorating fast.
Right.
That's a, that's all.
All right, can we share that with MoDOT?
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Could you let us know what their feedback is once you discuss that with them?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Alderman Walker?
Just a comment about Public Works. I think they're, from what I've seen, they're doing a really good job on keeping the weeds and in certain areas, and the grass cut well, and just it enhances the area, so congratulations to them.
Thank you. Alderman Becker?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Alderman Rucker?
Nope, I have nothing.
Not a staff? City Administrator?
Well, first of all, I want to make a couple comments to fill this as, the first one about Three Seasons entrance. Well, you know, our city, our city limits, boy, I just went blank right there. State limits?
It came to you.
Yeah, totally blank. City, our city limits, even though it's very close, but I'm part of the TAC Committee with Council Local Governments. That was a project that we had pushed because Linda Connor had also got comments about that and the business owners down there. Unfortunately, that did not make a high priority with this most recent step plan. However, we're going to be going in the process of finding projects, and I've emailed engineering and Ty and some other things that we can start working on. They're going to start working on priorities for the next plan, and I expect to keep moving that forward. Hopefully, it'll get a little higher scoring for priority, but it is still like on the tier three unfunded list, because they know for development that road needs a nice wider official entrance. So, good news. You might still, unfortunately, it didn't score high this time, but we've, it's not forgotten, so. The other thing is, Dave Christensen with Cochran will be doing the sidewalk presentation next meeting, so that'll be a good time to kind of ask him questions about how the priority and for the board as a whole to give feedback on what the next steps were, however we finalize that plan. So, the next meeting might help you under, help you with that.
Thank you.
The only other update I have, I sent an email out today, the MML Annual Conference, it's always a rush because they never block enough rooms for the hundreds and hundreds of people, so we always get in. You'll see an email in your work email that we've registered everybody. We know that not everybody may go, but that ensures that we get a room block. We'll just have to make sure that we un-register those of you that choose not to attend or can't attend or whatever. At this time, there's no virtual option, so just go to your email, look for it, and please respond to the couple questions, and that way we can shore up registration. I know it seems like a long time from now, but September will be here before you know it. It's at Union Station, and we're very, most of us are all very happy to be back in person, so I'm hoping it'll be a good attendance this year, because it's been a while. So, that's, that's it for me.
Thank you. City Attorney?
Just, well, first is congratulations to the re-elected Alderman. Your staff is aware that with what you guys get paid, this is actual public service, and nothing more. Second, just so you all know, court moved again, only once this time, and we will be having court next Friday, the 14th, here. That's accommodating travel schedules and judicial conferences and training. It's only a once-a-year deal on this, and I don't know that it'll be repeated next year. But for your second court this month, it will be Friday, May 14th, just to let you know. So, if you happen to be in the building or driving by and go, "What's going on?", that's what's going on.
All right, thank you. City Clerk?
Nothing, thank you.
Chief?
Thank you for the proclamations for ambulance and police leak.
Pleasure.
I'm happy to announce that we have a new police officer starting in two weeks, Justin Hutzler. He's coming with, coming to us with five years from Camden County. And I believe we also have an offer out that's been accepted for a communications officer, still pending her post-testing, but Cindy's going to give some more details on the hiring program.
All right, thank you. City Planner? HR?
So, I just want to, we have open enrollment.
Excuse me, make sure you're talking to the mics so the people online can hear.
Excuse me, make sure you're talking to the mics so the people online can hear.
Okay. So, we have open enrollment, May 18th and 19th. As I had mentioned two board meetings ago, our rates went up this year for health insurance 1.5%. There has been zero increase for vision and dental. There are zero plan changes to the medical, dental, and vision this year. We are changing our EAP provider this year, which we get that through NPR, so they did an RFP. New Directions has been our EAP provider, our Employee Assistance Program provider. They had recently been purchased and some things had changed, so they went out to bid and we're moving it over to Comp Site Guidance Resources, which will make that effective July 1st. The Wellness and Safety Incentive Program, WOWZaCash, that we have in place will be changing over to Motivate Me. It's through the Cigna program that we have, and that's all being covered and will be much better for me instead of my spreadsheets. It'll all be, employees will have their own portal, and they'll sign up and get everything that way, and it'll all be tracked that way, and NPR is covering the cost for the Cigna cost for that program. The Retirement ICMA RC is changing their name, and it's going to be Mission Square in the future, and I'll be getting all the details and out, and I'll include the board and my everything when I send it out next week to the employees. At staff meeting that we had, our Employee Appreciation Day, we'll be getting more information at that, but right now, please mark your calendars. That's going to be Saturday, July 24th. We thought that this year, since we didn't get to have our Employee Appreciation Dinner earlier this year, we better have a Family Employee Appreciation Day. And then I'd like to kind of go over some of the things that we have been doing to fill our vacancies and increase our application pools. We have, staff has recently just attended two local job fairs, one at Camden Town School District for seniors to address our seasonal workers and our concession workers, which seem to have gotten a couple of hits off of that. We had a couple of police officers go to the job fair out at the Lodge of Four Seasons, which unfortunately, they were great. They spent several hours there, but I think Officer Leva, Corporal Leva said, what, 14 people went through the whole thing. So, at least they're trying. As you're well aware of, the police recruit program has been out since April 20th. We've had a lot of contact information coming to me, asking me questions about it. We do have right now 14 applicants for that position right now, which is good. We did implement the first year, the shift differential pay for hours of work, 7:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m., and we also just recently added the academy reimbursement to our tuition reimbursement program for employees that we hire for police officers. If they've completed the academy within the last five years, we'll reimburse that. And as Alderman Osteen said, we just, today I just sent out information about the employer referral program, so hopefully that'll generate some candidates from our current employees. Also, what the Chief and Lieutenant O'Day and I are going to be working on, we've had contact with State Fair and LCTC to see if we could have a 911 certification program. It looks like that both of the entities, public entities, are interested in discussing this further, so the next couple of weeks we'll be having some meetings and trying to decide what we're going to do there. We're trying to get some type of interest in the 911 field to see if we can get that and get some certifications. I think there might actually be a couple of grants that we might be eligible for as well. So, we want Osage Beach to be a sponsor or some type of partnership with that so we can, you know, have some good applicants, but I know that lake area-wide 911 applications are, I mean, there's lots of vacancies, so I think that would be a benefit for everybody lake area-wide. So, then also NeoGov continues, that's our application software we use, and they keep upgrading and everything, so I think I'd mentioned that we added texting to our applicants, and it just recently added to our, now I can tell where everybody is actually coming in and applying from. So when I looked, I think it was, I can't remember, one job had nine applicants, and it came from seven different venues. So our applications and everything are getting out there, and the word's getting out there. It's just now we have to draw them, and we have to make sure that they understand that we've got the best to offer. So, that's going to have to be by positive feedback from the employees that we currently have and getting on what we out there, what we've offered. So, I think we've got the best compensation and benefit package in the lake area, so we just have to get it there. I have been contacted by a couple of public entities from the lake area asking for our information on what we're doing, so hopefully it'll work.
All right, a lot of good efforts, Cindy. Thank you very much. Assistant City Administrator.
Yeah, just to kind of piggyback a little bit on what Cindy said, just want to give you an update on some of the departments that I manage as far as employment. We're still short two in sewer, although I do have one in the background process. We're also short one in water and one in transportation. We did transportation interviews today, and the, Rob is choosing between which candidates he wants to move forward with there, so we're moving forward there. And then, as you know, on Monday, our new Public Works Operation Manager starts, which I'm extremely excited about. This is awesome. I think that Gina and I have picked a really good candidate, and I have a lot of hope and promise that this is going to work out really well for all of us, so that's very positive. We've also just finished the interviews for the Park Manager. We got some good candidates next week. Gina and I are going to discuss those and see how we want to move forward with there. And then I also unfortunately have a Park Technician position that also recently just opened, so we're also advertising for that as well. So, lots of hiring, very busy, but we're on top of it and trying to get all that filled so that we can go into summer with a full staff, so that's all I have.
All right, Mike, thank you. Mr. Van Leer with Cochrane Engineering.
Yes, thank you. Before the meeting, I gave everyone a handout on Autumn Lane. This is a project that's included in your budget for this year, and we wanted to present the scope to the board prior to moving forward, full design. I think this project actually predates our involvement with the city. It's been on the books for a while. I believe the project originated by several homeowners who had drainage concerns approaching the Special Road District, and then the Special Road District bought the project to the city. What we're proposing to do here is, first off, Autumn Lane is off of Three Seasons Road off of KK, just to get everybody where we're talking about. This project would pick up at the end of the pavement on Autumn Lane, so that's Autumn Lane running left and right across your page. The lighter gray hatch on the left side of your page is existing pavement. The darker gray is new pavement. That would be an 18-foot wide road with gutter placed on the lake side of the road to prevent water from running off the road onto those properties, and that would carry all that water down to the low point in the road where we would install a new culvert across the road and just do some riprap lining of that existing ditch. I think that's the general scope. After talking with staff and then also Rob Long, I think the consensus is that if the completion of this project, the city would not add this to the city street inventory. The project would be completed, but not added to the city street inventory. Obviously, that's up for discussion, but that's, I guess I don't see a lot of benefit in this becoming a city street. This is nearing the city limits, and again, there's this limited benefit in the city taking over the ownership and maintenance of this road.
And as Dave said, when we had discussed this project, and Dave's correct, this predates Cochrane coming in, the board approved city staff to work on the engineering back in 19, sometime in 2019 when the project was put forward. Beyond that, I did not have as many details other than what was passed on to Cochrane from previous staff as well, so, but I felt it was important that we brought the discussion up knowing that we're getting ready to design because some of these Osage Beach Special Road District projects that eventually go from private streets to city streets, whether we get to that, sometimes also don't meet certain guidelines. And I thought, speaking of Kevin earlier when we said there were gaps, the one thing that I, in learning about the history, that I didn't think was fair to the board is, once it gets to the city to ask for acceptance, they should be well aware of what they agreed staff to work on in engineering. So, we're really just trying to keep transparent about these projects because, you know, these are finalizing ones that's been pre-approved, so that's really informational purposes. This is where we're at, and if there's additional comments or suggestions, you know, that needs to be further discussed at another meeting, or you want time, that this is just one of those last ones that we wanted to make sure that you were aware of what they were getting ready to design for.
Questions? Yes, Alderman Rucker.
A number, a number of issues. First of all, let me go back in history of my understanding and discussion that was had in reference to this with previous staff, previous engineer specifically. This road apparently has had some difficulty because of some possible waters, utilities that we had put in, and we were continually washing the bottom of this road out. We were going to accept this into city inventory and so that we could maintain that maintenance issue and not have problems, and supposedly, and I'm, hopefully you understand my words, and supposedly we were going to be able to do this without any sign-off or anything from any of the residents because we have been maintaining this road for quite some time. And I can't think of the legal terminology that I was given at the time, not by our legal department, but by our engineering department, that we had done, been maintaining that road, and we were going to be able to do that. Of course, I questioned it quite some, many years ago, and saying, "We can do that? We can do that?" Is that something, etc.? And was given the assurance that, yeah, we could, and I don't know that I ever got the words, I talked to the attorney, but I got that information. So, I just want to bring that up, and I want to get that clarified on where we're at with that, because that, I don't know who else had that conversation, but I did, more than once, and I believe that that conversation may have been held with other people, possibly the Road District people, possibly, I'm not sure of that. So, that's it there. With that being said, I would like to see this become into our inventory because I believe this is, if I'm not mistaken, the back way into Shorty Pants?
Right.
Okay? I would like to have a good, full way in and out of Shorty Pants, so they have a good, easy drive to drive up here and talk to us. And the bottom line is, I'd like to annex that, or like for them, not for us to, I'd like for them to ask for voluntarily, that's the correct terminology.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, that's the correct terminology. And I believe that this would be showing good faith on why and what we can do for that. And so that's one of the reasons why many years ago, when this conversation was had in reference to this road, I was in favor of the thing being done. Now, this never came before the board, I believe. That was just conversations that I had had with the city engineer on it, and so that's just some knowledge and information, and I just want to get it clarified on where and what, and share that with the rest of the board.
So, I think the term I had heard previous staff use was adverse possession.
Thank you. I'm sitting here, my brain's going crazy trying to think of the word.
What we've done is we had our surveyors research the property that's there. There is a defined right-of-way that the existing road sits in for the existing plots and deeds. We can do this work, and as we have it laid out now, the new road would lay within that right-of-way. So there would really be no new right-of-way needed. We possibly could need temporary construction easements, I'm not sure of that at this point. But so that, and exactly what we would need to do with that right-of-way would depend upon whether or not the city wanted this to become a city street or not. If we wanted that right-of-way to become a city, if we wanted this to become a city street, then that right-of-way would need to become the city's right-of-way.
Just for clarity, somebody help me here. Where does the city, what portion of this road is not in the city? It's more than just this section here. It doesn't go all the way back, way back towards Three Seasons Road before, are any of this in there? So, this portion is in the city limits? It's in the city of Osage Beach, it's not in the city inventory. I'm trying to remember, I'm trying to think, how much of that street is in the city? I know it's all in the city, but is it in our inventory?
No, it stops right up there where that turns off, because we only annexed this back in like 2004.
So, it's in the city, but the road is not in our inventory?
Private road, the whole thing's a private.
Basically, where the gravel road starts out to about, I would say, 400 feet from Shorty Pants is where the city limit stops, okay? There's a couple of property owners between the city limits and Shorty Pants that don't want any part of being in the city, or they certainly didn't at that point, or we would have looked at taking them. But, yeah, I mean, as far as the city is concerned, where Cardinal Circle loops hits on and then Three Seasons is where our ownership stops. And the biggest part of the issue is, you know, there was a substantial wash whenever we did the Cardinal Circle water and reconstruction. There was a substantial wash that was created, one right at the seam, which is kind of the whole 10-foot for the driveway thing, just kind of the same idea. We created basically a water flume that just washed that edge out and created a ditch between our paved right-of-way and their gravel road that became impassable after everything, you know? And then, of course, as it would run across that pavement, then it would go down the side of the road and washed out a lot of those driveways. So that's the issue that we have faced there for quite some time. You know, as far as what this looks like, it looks like this is basically completing out to about where our city limits line is, and we have probably, to get to the paved road, the county road that comes down to Shorty Pants, I would say there's, what, Dave, maybe another 600 feet?
Yeah, I was gonna, yeah, I was gonna say 500.
600 to be safe to get to their parking lot. So a portion of the road, the road actually stops, and then you got, would lead up to Shorty Pants parking lot, go through their parking lot, and then get back to the county road that goes back up the hill.
So, yes, Alderman Walker.
So, even though this road isn't in our inventory as the city, it's our responsibility to repair it and spend money on it?
No.
Tom, this is a project that the board and the Osage Beach Special Road District partnered with back in 2018, 2019, so they're funding the construction up to X dollars.
The Special Road District?
The Special Road District, we just supplying the engineering.
And I know that, Tom, we're doing that just from my own history, and I know Alderman Rucker and Mayor Oliver Eak and Gina can go back that far. You know, our previous engineering group felt like while it wasn't ours and we didn't have the responsibility to reconstruct it, we were causing a substantial issue with our road and our construction to this piece, so, you know, getting the Road District involved from a finance perspective and then us providing the engineering that would help us transition from our road, which is the Cardinal Circle Autumn connection, onto this was something that they felt was important.
Okay.
Well, the homeowners went through the special road.
Yeah, yeah, homeowners.
Makes more sense.
Any other discussion, Alderman Ross?
So for a point of clarity, first of all, it looks to me, I'm on Camden County GIS right now, it looks to me like based on where this, I'm assuming the construction is what's in gray, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. It ends about 200 feet before our city limits, so there's a couple other properties past this, okay? Is this, this is currently a gravel road?
It transitions from asphalt pavement to gravel at where the hatch changes colors.
Where the hat, excuse me?
On the left, on the left-hand side of your page, there's a lighter So on the left, on the left-hand side of your page, there's a lighter gray hatch, so that's.
Right where the line says existing pavement, 17-foot wide?
Right.
Is that what you're talking about? Okay.
Yeah, it transitions from pavement to gravel at that location.
Okay. So basically, what's in dark gray is what we would be completing and designing for at least.
Yes.
And that predominantly is gravel today?
All gravel, yes.
It's all gravel, okay. And in the end, I completely agree with Kevin that we should work to get dog, or Shorty Pants, as well as some other places, in our, voluntarily annexed into our city. We've talked about that for a couple of years and I'll be very clear. I'm very disappointed that the amount of effort put towards that has been minimal to none, but we'll move on from that. This, for us to spend our engineers' time and money to design a road and project manage a road, which I assume is the next step in the plan, for a road that isn't going to be in our inventory, I don't support at this point. Now, there may be more information that we're missing from pictures or.
Well, the board has already approved you to do, him to do that.
Yeah, but we did approve it, at least I approved it. And I don't know if it was ever said in the meeting, I believe I asked it because I usually try to. But I had all understanding that we were doing this with the idea that we would be taking it over. And the difficulty, as I brought forth to our prior engineering department, was the fact that this portion here that we're talking about would not only have to become part of the inventory, but you need to go back towards Three Seasons, a number of feet. And all of that was going to be able to become a part of our inventory because of this adverse, whatever. Yes. And that's, that's why I supported it. And again, I don't know that this kind of discussion, matter of fact, I know this kind of discussion had not been held in these Alderman meetings. And after our, after changes in our previous engineering department, and I found out that some of that did not, that's why I wanted to make sure that that discussion was being held at this point.
So let's, little clarity around adverse possession, okay? And Ed, you may need to help me out with this. We haven't made improvements on this road. We haven't utilized this road as a city street for any long extended period of time over the last seven to 10 years, have we?
We've been repairing it.
Okay, just because we've chosen to repair does not mean that we've taken possession. And Ed, you, help me out with this, I wouldn't believe that adverse possession becomes relevant here.
Adverse possession classically is a cause of action between two private landowners.
Correct.
It can occasionally lie against the city. I don't know that it lies as a cause of action for a city to take over an existing public asset. There are some other statutes under the, I think it's Chapter 290 in Missouri statutes about public roads, but I'd have to look those up for, I want to learn for you on that one. It's news, it's news to me as a lawyer that the city's taking over roads by adverse possession. I think I'll have to, I'll have to, I'll have to.
That would be news to me too.
Have to do a little homework on that one tomorrow.
So I will just say that I'm a little bit like Kevin. To tell you the truth, maybe didn't think to ask the right question. I didn't realize that this was, I knew that there was some special road district funds. I knew, I think Nick and I drove this at one point in time. And, you know, when we were looking at a lot of roads in the city, and I think he drove me down through here, I still don't believe that unless there's an intent, unless there's an intent for this to become part of our city inventory, that we should be providing services for engineering, design and project management. I'll leave it at that. If we want to table this for, until some people can get out and look at it, get some pictures, get more information, so be it. But I did not understand, just like Kevin, that this wasn't going to our inventory. And while I realize that we have always done things like this with the road district, I thought anything that I've been involved with was with the intent so that we'd become part of the city road and so on. So at the very least, and I don't know that I would ever support this either, but if we're going to do this, well then let's take it to the city limits. There's another 225 feet, unless there's some barrier that I'm not aware of that wouldn't make sense to do so. But at this point, I'm very hesitant for us to begin design. I think that's the question at hand, so that's where I'm at.
Alderman Rucker?
Couple things. Number one, remember if we're going further, we're not paying for our construction. We're only paying for engineering. So for us to make the decision that we would want to go another 200 feet, I'm not opposed, but I'm just saying that's not our call because we're not, we're not spending the construction money. That's first point. Second of all, I have to somewhat disarray with you, Richard, in the fact that if this is taking care of the water problem that we started, that gives me a little bit of different thought because I agree that I want this part of our inventory, but also understand that we have created some water problem issues and this would take care of that. And again, I'd like for it to be in the inventory, don't get me wrong, I would. But I would be willing, if it takes care of the water issues that continue to go on, that supposedly we started with some work that was done years ago, then that would help and that would help as far as I'm concerned. And I could support that with the idea of this is also getting us a little bit closer to being able to have good roadway to back and forth to Shorty Pants.
So I would just say this, that if in fact we need to do all of this, I don't know, how many feet is this approximately, Dave?
About 250 is what I.
If we need to do 250 feet of roadway to alleviate a drainage concern that we created, maybe that is the right thing, okay? That's a lot of road to alleviate a drainage concern, okay? And before I can support this, I'd like to see that with my eyes. I'm struggling and scratching my head on this one because I never assumed that we would be doing something for the Special Road District that there wouldn't be some benefit somehow fairly, even if it was a loose connection, to value to the citizens of Osage Beach as a whole, okay? And I'm struggling with this one, whatever, it's not going to, there's no intent at this point, from what I understand of what was said, for this to come into the city inventory. My recommendation is, is, and if you guys want to move forward or whatever, we want to take a vote and however, my recommendation is let's take a couple of weeks and everybody go look at this thing and ask any question they have to. They need to so that we can help give you guidance that is more educated in two weeks, but that may not be what everybody else wants to do.
In the meantime, let me full, let me create the past history story, like what decisions the board has made, when, what were conversations I can find in my notes, get with Dave and that will give you time too to get more familiarized with the history and where we're at now. And then we can actually put this on an agenda to give them more direction. Dave, sorry, I.
Something else I think from what I'm hearing would maybe be helpful is to see a bigger, bigger area of what's going on here, what's, what's in the city inventory now, what isn't and where the city limits are. And maybe kind of think more of the master plan, what may happen in this area.
Definitely.
I think that would be helpful also, so we can have that prepared for next meeting.
Do you? Go ahead, Alderman.
I just really appreciate you all bringing this conversation up because it's better to have this conversation now and I applaud that. And so I just want to make sure that everybody understands that.
The existing roadway that connects where this new road is going to go, what condition is that road in? Is that, is that in a condition that, you know, we would accept it into the city inventory? Was it built to city standards at that point?
No.
Okay.
No, it wouldn't be anywhere close.
Because that was, that was, that was all put in with the subdivision that went in down there?
The Cardinal Circle in Autumn was reconstructed by the city back, I think in like 1999 to 2002, something like that. Cardinal Will and Woolley reconstruction.
Okay, well, maybe, we'll get, you'll get that history.
Just because the road does not meet our existing standards does not mean we don't take it over. We had this discussion.
No, I'm not saying it did, Kevin, I'm just simply asking what condition the road's in, you know?
Yeah, we do need to know that.
It's evaluation, you know, and that type of thing. And if we're taking this in with the understanding, or with what we think is going to be the understanding, is that this will allow a roadway to go all the way through, excuse me. This is going to be done with the understanding that it is going to provide a roadway at some point to allow bringing Shorty Pants into the city. I think even the city planner has indicated, we've got some people down there who make this non-contiguous, that don't have any interest in being in the city. If they don't have any interest in being in the city and it's not contiguous, we can't bring them in from that side, okay? We may have to go in from another way, you know, which we could possibly do. But I'm just saying that there, it may not be as simple as one might anticipate. So I just bring that up. Let's do this, let's plan on discussing this at the next board meeting. Do we have enough time between now and the next board meeting?
I'll let you know.
Okay. We will get it at the next board meeting, if not within the next two board meetings, giving us a chance to put together the information that we need so that we can bring this back for, to the board for further discussion. Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on then to Building Official. Wore you out today, did we? Or you wore us out, I don't know about you.
Mayor out reading all that.
And Ty, welcome, good to have you back with us, sir. Any comments?
No comments tonight.
All right, well, thank you very much. Well, then our business for this evening is complete and we are now adjourned, thank you. Yep, yep.